Good evening. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Raymond Zoning Board of Appeals for Monday, January 7, 2013. The first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of our meeting on November 26, 2012. Does everyone on the board have a chance to receive a copy of and have a chance to review the minutes?
Okay.
Yes, I would entertain a motion for any edits, adjustments necessary to the minutes.
I'm going to be acceptable as far as.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. I'll mention again, as I often do, more for the benefit of the folks who are current applicants than with regard to meetings we've already conducted, that the official record of our proceedings is the DVD video recorded of what we do. We review the minutes as written as a secondary reference. So with the motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, that motion passes 4-0, the minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda for tonight is the application regarding lot 30, Lot 57. This is in the shoreline zone. The applicants are Beth Cormier and Joanne Stinson. This is an application requesting a setback reduction from 20 feet to 10 feet on the left side of the property for purposes of a replacement. I'm looking at the wrong item. Oh, yeah, that's right. Replacement garage, excuse me. Sounded vaguely familiar to the one we did last time, so I was momentarily off track. So do we have anyone here to speak on behalf of the application?
Yes.
All right. We ask that people come to the podium because that's where the video record is made.
Okay.
And if you can identify yourself and...
Yep, I'm Beth Cormier.
Okay.
This is Joanne Stinson. We own the property at 51 Haskell Avenue. We'd like to add a two-car garage to the existing home at 51 Haskell, as the summary says. Based on the discussions we've had with Mr. Hanson, the location of the garage, the most conforming location of the garage on the property would require a setback to the right-of-way that is just to the left of the property, a setback reduction. And so that's what we're here to ask for approval for today. The two-car garage we'd like would be a replacement structure for an existing building that's on the property that's non-conforming. And so that's what we would do with the property is to remove that existing building that's non-conforming, that's right at the water's edge, remove that and put a slightly smaller two-car garage, as a footprint goes, up next to the house, which is, you know, up by the road. So that's what we're asking for the project.
Okay. And we have received written materials, so I appreciate that, but we appreciate that explanation. It looks like the reduction request is a reduction from 20 feet to 10 feet, as I recall.
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant before we go further?
I guess my one question would be, the existing structure down by the water, is that a garage?
No, it's a three-seas and cottage.
Okay, thank you.
For purposes of the record, there were members of the board who had an opportunity to do a site walk with Code Enforcement Officer Hanson, and I'll show everybody, you may have had a chance to go on your own here. Okay, it was, yeah, it's quite a, it's certainly a structure right there on the water's front. Other questions for the applicant this time? All right, we may have some as we discuss the matter, but you can have a seat now if you'd like. Now, is there anyone present to speak against the application? All right, hearing no one, I think we can open up the matter for discussion. I'm going to ask Chris if he'll start with...
Absolutely.
...a little bit of a discussion to walk us through the process on this one. It's going to be a removal of an existing structure and a replacement...
I could give you a little background history of this. To start with, this is a non-conforming lot of record with two non-conforming structures. That was the case three years ago. One of the structures that was non-conforming was torn down and rebuilt to the greatest practical extent. The building is 99% behind the 100-foot setback, so they were able to tear down an existing structure and rebuild their current home, this log home that they would like to add the garage to. The previous owner also did some renovation to the existing cottage, hooked it up to the septic system that's up near the house, and that existing cottage that's down by the water is probably eight to 10 feet from the water's edge. It had previously had cesspool for a septic system that was removed, they put in a pump tank and hooked it up to the new septic for the new home. So you had a situation, we had two non-conforming uses on a non-conforming lot. When they came to me and asked if they could tear the cottage down and build a garage, two things came out of me out of the ordinance. One, it's a change of use from a residential use to a storage or a garage, which I don't have the authority to do a change of use, only the appeals board has that. And in looking at it with the applicants, I could have permitted a garage somewhere in the middle of this lot, they would have met the greatest practical extent distance from the water and from the sidelines, but we would have had to cut several large pine trees down, and we went around and around where the best place would be, where their existing cottage is right on the sideline, which would be the southwest corner, I believe. That's literally right on the line. They would have been able to bring that garage back up somewhere close to the existing home, right on the sideline, but it seemed that if we did a setback reduction on the northeast side, it would make more sense to get the building further away from the water and be off from the lot lines to the greatest practical extent. Now, as a board, you have the authority to do the change of use if you so see fit, and then I have the authority to do a water setback to the greatest practical extent. So I think it's going to take a combination of board approval and my approval for this project to move forward, if that makes sense.
So for purposes of, we have an application regarding the setback reduction, suggesting that there's also a change of use that we should review? Okay. Okay, questions from the board, from Code Enforcement Officer Hanson? Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question, Chris. When a structure right at the lake's edge is removed, what do you do with respect to a vegetative buffer?
Well, in...
Does that become part of your process?
Actually, in one that's this close to the water, it's actually partly my jurisdiction and partly the DEP's jurisdiction, but we do generally ask them to vegetate the area with plantings of trees and shrubs to mitigate that bare spot.
Would that be part of the permitting process?
That could be part of either my permitting process, or it could be a condition of approval by the Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, Chris, can you just explain to me, when this is an attached garage, is this considered part of the principal dwelling, or is this an accessory?
This would be now, if it's attached, it would be part of the principal structure. And to that note, it would be very beneficial to the lake and the town to have a building that close to the water removed. And after the site walk, I think we all felt in agreement that this would be the least impact on the lake and the lot itself.
And is this, would this structure be the, since it's the principal structure, would this be within the 30% rule?
Because the existing building is out of the 100%, it's 100% out, they didn't need any expansion on that. This structure is less square footage and volume than the existing one. I haven't seen the volume calculations, but I know that square footage-wise, it's less. The only portion of the structure with, I'd have to see the application to totally answer this, because we go from the 100-foot mark, 30% expansion is allowed for that structure because, you know, it was an existing structure of record, so it could have a 30% expansion. I don't believe they're looking for, I don't, I can't speak for the applicant, I don't know if they've done the volume calculation, but my guess, looking at the drawing that they proposed, the elevation is very similar to the existing cottage, I would make sure that if we permitted this, that it'd be under the 30%, but I don't think it would even come close.
And is it, there hasn't been any record of an expansion?
No.
So this footprint for the new house was identical to the...
No.
And I guess the other question I'd have is that it is, because I'm very conscious, especially in the shoreline area, that it's not our purview to allow any construction that would bring the structure closer to the water. Is that correct?
Correct. But this would be a replacement. It would be like you're moving the structure up to the...
And a change of use?
And a change of use.
So it's not that we're replacing a garage, we're replacing a cottage with a garage?
A residential cottage, an accessory dwelling with a garage.
Okay. And that being the case, if the cottage were to stay, and I'm just proposing, if the cottage were to stay, that this proposed garage couldn't be built?
Not without a reduction, setback reduction.
Well, no, isn't it not, in fact, closer to the lake?
That's, you're correct. On the setback to the water.
Correct.
It could not be built.
So without the cottage factored in here...
They wouldn't be able to do it.
This garage could not be built where it's proposed.
That's correct.
Because it would be within the 100 feet of the lake.
You're correct.
Okay. So Peter asked, it becomes part of the principal structure, the new garage, does that make it a residential building?
The whole structure would be a single-family dwelling.
So is the...
With a garage attached.
Right. Is the change in use, then, from an accessory structure to a principal structure? Or is the change in use from accessory structure to storage? And is there...
If you approve the setback reduction, I don't think you have to deal with the change of use. If they tore this building down and built the garage in the middle of the lot, which I could permit under my authority as a code officer, they couldn't build the garage without the change of use.
Right.
So I don't really, I don't know how to make it any simpler than, they could rebuild the cottage with a 30% expansion, they have all kinds of options they could do with that Whether you need to do a change of use because it's attached, once it becomes attached, once this building comes down and the new one constructed, it's the same use, it's a single-family dwelling with an attached garage. Now, to further complicate that, if they chose to, they could make that an accessory They're choosing to do a garage.
Right.
So to take that another step, they could relocate that building adjacent to their home and have a two-unit.
Right.
We wouldn't be talking about a change of use. They're choosing to do a garage. The only reason I brought up the change of use is if it was anywhere else in the law and they wanted to make it into a garage, you'd have to approve it.
Okay.
It's a little complicated.
Yep. Well, it strikes me, so if the approval were an approval for this specific purpose, which is to say that setback reductions can be granted with conditions at all times, right, so within the limits of our authority, and if the condition were for purposes of what's been requested in the application, as opposed to simply a generic, you know, setback reduction from 20 to 10 feet without specificity, the, it sounds like your guidance is that the proposed plan does not result in a change of use. Okay, you're nodding, okay. Does anybody on the board have concern about that? I don't know whether, I mean, to be honest, I have not poured over the ordinance with regard to that.
I personally have a problem in the change of use. I think that it's not essential. There may be some on the board that disagree, but I think it's kind of nice and mean to have a garage. So I'm not going to argue at that point at all. So I wouldn't have a problem with the change of use. I guess I'd say, just for the record, at this point in time, and I think we had a conversation, it was probably going back on the history of the zoning board of appeals, but the one thing that does concern me is that, as I think I mentioned at the last meeting or the meeting before, when I first got on this board, it was more of a let's make a deal rather than going by the statute and the law. So what would happen, it would be, an applicant would come to us and say, okay, well, I'd be willing to take down that trailer that's rotten by the side of the road, it's an eyesore to everybody, if you'd grant us the variance. And in fact, that's how variances were granted. And it came to our attention after a long time that, in fact, that's not legal, and that it really circumvents the whole idea of zoning ordinances, and therefore what you do is you look at the merits of the case, and certainly you look at every case individually and let it stand in its own merits. But that's why I'm just always cautious whenever something's looking like, you know, a quid per quo type of an arrangement involving the ordinances.
Can I speak to that, Peter?
Well, sure. Sure. I want you to know that these lovely ladies came to me asking for advice of how to go about, they bought this home, they don't like looking at their own cottage, and they wanted to know what they could do, and they wanted to know how they could do it. And we went through every single scenario that I could think of on the site, and this seemed not let's make a deal, this seemed to be the real deal that made the most sense for them and for the town. A win-win, in my opinion. And they've been very pleasant to work with the whole process.
Would there be any opportunity to move that garage back behind the 100-foot and still have it attached?
The problem is the septic systems in front of the house, because it's a chambered system that you have to drive on. We looked at that. That's as far front as it can come to meet the rear setback from the right-of-way, and the septic system is even squeezed into that.
Sure, but it's the septic system that's really the limiting factor.
Yes.
Because quite honestly, I'd be more of a mind to grant a front setback and move the garage back further from the lake.
We looked at everything, including that. They're as tight as they can be. The only other option they would have, if they wanted a garage, would probably be detached, and it would be totally within the 100 feet, right around where it says Lot 32, in the center of that plot plan they gave you, and we'd have to take down a stand of nice pine trees. So this seemed to make the most sense.
Let me comment just briefly on the discussion we're having now. So I think I've been on the board during the period you're talking about where I think things have been less freewheeling than they used to be.
Yes, you have.
The first hearing I recall participating in was one of those where we took care through a session that lasted, I think, two four-hour hearings to make sure that we were carefully parsing the requirements of the ordinance in order to...
The boathouse?
Yeah. In any case, so that's certainly also a concern of mine and has been throughout my tenure on the board. So one of the things I want to make sure, so I understand what you've described, there's a concept here, at least in part, of a replacement, if I understand. Are we still thinking that part of this is a replacement structure? Is that the, is that...
Well, you have to consider it a replacement because they wouldn't be allowed to do this if we didn't, because of the 100-foot setback. You're allowed to reconstruct a structure that's non-conforming to the greatest practical extent on the lot. I could do that.
Right.
And it would be less than 100 feet. The problem is, I don't have the authority to do a side setback. That's why we're here.
Right, I get that. So is there, and, you know, again, scenarios that are not being presented to us, but which would be clearly within the authority of the, would be to, you know, you could move, presumably you could move that existing structure to the greatest practical extent away from the water.
And put it on a foundation right next to the house.
That would be a clearly permissible and proactive and presumably beneficial from the point of view of the ordinance and the town activity to occur. Get the building that exists there off the water.
That's my job.
Right. And that's part of what we're talking about happening, you know, here, obviously. As you pointed out, another, something else that could happen would be, in connection with that, would be, as long as it was a change of use, a garage at some spot to the greatest practical extent away from the water. It sounds to me like, from your point of view, this location constitutes the greatest practical extent away from the water in light of the other features of the site.
It's definitely the furthest from the water that the building could be constructed on the site.
The consequence of putting it there is that it creates a side setback issue, and that's what we're, that's the application we have in front of us.
And for those that didn't, you can see it on the plot plan, it says on this, the line that they're asking for the setback reduction to is a 20-foot wide right-of-way, and then the next structure is quite a distance from that right-of-way, so we wouldn't be getting, the existing cottage is very close to an existing home, so there's that walling in down at the front. This actually brings it back and opens things back up. So that's another positive that I saw, looked at the site.
I mean, another way of looking at it is, I think, to a certain extent, we don't even have the greatest practical extent issue in front of us. I mean, we are not, that is your area of authority. We have a side setback issue.
We're setback only.
Yep, and to what extent, you may prove that with conditions or not.
That's why I said it's kind of a combination. If you can give them the setback reduction, if that happens, I have the authority to, for them to build the garage to the greatest practical extent because it's a replacement structure.
What makes, I think, it a little bit foggier in this situation is that generally speaking, when we're talking about replacement structures, it generally is in the same site. So in other words, if you had a cottage, if the cottage was right up next to the house and you wanted to knock that down, build a two-car garage, then, you know, it's pretty easy to conceive of it as a replacement. In this situation, it is a replacement, and I don't disagree with that, but it's coming from another part of the lot. So that clouds it a little bit. I would say that in looking at this, and I don't disagree at all with what Chris is saying, my biggest concern would be with any lots down by the water being involved in any granting of any variance, which makes the lot more non-conforming. And I believe by statute, we can't do that. And in looking at your plan, I see this making the lot less non-conforming rather than more non-conforming.
Other questions from the board for Chris, or comments, or questions for the applicants? Okay. So, Peter?
I guess what I just asked the chairs, what do you think about the, and I hear what Chris is saying, as far as, I mean, we could go the condition route, or we could go to the point of a change of use. I guess my, then let me just ask the applicants, you don't have any intention of developing the garage into dwelling space above, or turning that into bedrooms or cottage function in any way?
No, I mean, it'll be, right now, you asked the volume question, and I, do I need to go up there and answer?
It would be helpful, yeah.
You asked the volume question. We haven't done the calculations yet, but it would be like a story and a half, so we'd have...
Storage up there, but not a full, not a dwelling. We weren't planning on a dwelling, it was really more for storage up above and then the two-car garage.
So I guess my concern would be, if we didn't go through the change of use, could this be construed as the cottage still exists?
No, I think what, you can't permit a side setback reduction for another dwelling. I remember that from the ordinance. So if we permit the garage, there's going to be a condition on it that it can never be dwelling space.
So does that have to be a stated condition?
I can do that on the permit. Because I can't, because of the fact that we can't do an additional dwelling to a setback reduction, we can't do it for that reason. We can do it for a garage, we've done it for garages since I've been here, but not, we can't do it for dwelling units. So either you would need to make that condition as the board, so it's a permanent record, or I would put it on the certificate of occupancy when I give them the occupancy for the garage. Either way, it can happen, and it would have...
And I'm just trying to think of a way to get around having to go through the use thing, if what you can do is take care of that through the permitting.
I think you could just request or make mention of it when you make your motion, that the CEO make that a condition of the permit. That would probably be the easiest.
Okay.
Then it's in your minutes in the record and gives me direction as to how I permit it and how I give them their occupancy at the end.
Something that only becomes a dwelling unit when it has, what, a kitchen and a...
Yeah, kitchen and bathroom.
All right. Comments?
I have another question, Chris. What's the process you use for establishing specifications for a shoreline buffer? You work directly with DEP, or do you get in touch with Raymond Waterways, or...
With this one, where it's, the DEP's pretty flexible, allowing me, my discretion, to recommend the plantings to meet the point system. This is a pretty small square footage. The ordinance gives us guidance as to how many points, how many, what needs to be planted. Basically, we just need to see that it's vegetated, not left in its, we wouldn't want just the foundation hole, we want it to be filled, and then bark mulched and planted.
The reason I ask the question now, Chris, is we're, on Crescent Lake, we kind of have a unique set of circumstances. We're in the midst of this, the application of this 319 grant, the Clean Water Act funding that we got from the federal folks in the state. And the association has retained the services of Pat Marass. Have you worked with Pat?
No.
He's very knowledgeable, and he's been, he's worked with about 15 shoreline property owners so far, and probably another 15 this year, and I think he would be an excellent resource to call in on something like that, and he may have ideas that could make more of the shoreline a better buffer zone.
More Betty Williams as well, from Raymond Waterways. I deal with Betty.
You talked to one, you've talked to the other.
I deal with Betty on a weekly or bi-weekly basis on stuff like this.
So would she be your contact?
For any guidance that we need.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one last question, following up on Peter's comment. I think in order to address the change of use issue, or make it a non-issue, I think, this will need, whatever this is, and we can deem it to be a, but we need a condition that's attached to the existing principal structure, right? If it's not attached, then it's clearly a separate structure.
An accessory, isn't it? It's an accessory.
Yeah, it would be an accessory structure, then you would have to address the change of use.
Right, so it needs to be attached, I think that is...
Yes, which, that's their point.
Yeah, okay. All right. Other comments, questions? All right, so then...
Can I ask a question?
You sure may.
I guess I was confused on the, so the point about change of use, so is it easier in terms of being clear about the regulations if we call it a change of use, or if we don't call it a change of use?
Well, I think the issue we have is, my last point, and this may not cover everything, but my understanding of it, if it's attached to the principal structure, it becomes a residential... residential use.
Okay.
Part of a residential structure, and therefore is not a change in use of what exists there now.
Okay.
Were it not to be attached, and you wanted to use it as a garage, then it's an accessory structure, which requires a change in use. The point being, I guess, that we can, we can either approve the setback reduction with a condition that the production be with respect to a new attachment, probably just, I mean, I, I think, we'll see what the motions look like, but it may just be a garage attached to the existing principal structure, in which case, the whole change of use issue is subsumed within the condition. An, an alternative we could do would be more of a two-step process, but I don't think, we don't think we need to.
Oh, okay.
I think the, the verbiage I've heard used is, if the structure is not attached, it's, it's an accessory building, like Peter commented on. If it's attached, it's incidental to the primary use, I think is the word, the terminology I've heard and used in the code world. This would, the garage would be incidental to the primary residential structure.
Yep. And it's incidental if it shares a common wall, or if it, it shares the roof.
Okay. Other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, so I would entertain a motion if someone wants to take a shot at making one at this point.
I would move, I would move that we grant the sideline reduction setback from 20 to 10 feet, with the condition that the CEO include in the permitting, the element that there, there are to be, there's to be no dwelling, you know, units contained within the garage.
Okay. Have a second? All right. I'm going to make a motion for, just to be clear, for an additional condition, that the setback reduction that we allow be with respect to construction of an, an attachment to the, or, or to something which is incidental to the existing principal structure. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
A little bit more discussion, and I'm not in any way, I'm not adding to the motion, but Eldon made a comment about making a condition that the existing cottage location be vegetated.
Yep.
That might need to be added to your motion.
So moved.
So, do I have a s...
Per CEO approval.
All right, well, I'll second that motion. Any further motions with regard to the application? Did you hear that last one? The, was the last one clear enough?
Yeah, I, I think that, then, a second condition on the motion is that the, per the CEO, the area where the cottage is being removed be re-vegetated, just another way of stating it. So, do, do we have that motion?
Okay. We have a second on all of those. All right, anything further to add? All right. You know, just for clarity, I don't know whether, why don't we, why don't we vote on each of the three motions that were put forward? The first was for approval of the reduction from 20 to 10 feet with a condition.
That there be no dwelling space.
That there be no dwelling spaces, and so, all in favor of that motion. That motion is approved. The second was as to an additional condition, that the reduction be with respect to a, a new incidental structure attached to the existing principal structure. All in favor? It's approved, four to zero. And the last was the additional condition with regard to the vegetative buffer in the site of the existing cottage that is to be removed. All in favor? It's approved, four to zero. So, the application is approved, subject to the conditions just described, and thank you for your time.
Do you have a two-minute, three-minute recess?
At the request of one member of the board, we're going to recess for just two minutes.
All right. We are back in session on this meeting of the Raymond Zoning Board of Appeals, Monday, January 7th, 2013, after a short recess. The next item on our agenda is board communications, and tonight we have review of draft bylaws that are, you know, this is a, a process that we initiated after discussion during our last meeting, so this will be a first, a first discussion of further progress, and I think, if I recall right, it was Eldon and Peter who...
Peter and I.
Took up the job, so I'll, I'll turn it over to whichever of you wants to take the lead on it.
Well, I'll take the lead, because we did not get together, and I'm beginning to feel like I may be the only member of our board who is concerned about training and participation, but, but after reviewing what my primary concern is, and that's having members or alternate members who don't attend regularly with no recourse at this point in time, I, I would recommend that we change that. And even though I've looked through the bylaws that were provided by our secretary as a guideline from our planning board, they're very, very extensive, very, very comprehensive, very complicated, and I looked at some others that were provided to us from other communities, and I'd like to keep it just as simple as possible, and so, I typed up what would satisfy my concerns, and I have a copy for each of you, and if we put it right in our current ordinance, I would, I would feel, I would feel satisfied. But under Article VI, Board of Appeals, A, Appointment and Composition, there are three points to date. Point three reads, A three reads, "A member of the board may be dismissed for cause by the municipal officers before the expiration of his term, period." And using the bylaws from York, Maine, I would like to recommend we, we modify that, and you can see the additions, it is italicized, "A member of the board or alternate member of the board may be dismissed for cause by the municipal office before the expiration of this term. The term for cause shall include failure to attend three consecutive board meetings or hearings, including workshops, a meeting without prior approval of the chairman, or voting when a member has a conflict of interest. At the request of the member in question, the Board of Appeals shall discuss the matter in executive session." The, the key things that are, that I think are important to point out here are that I'm adding, adding an alternate member as a member who should attend regularly. I would recommend that including workshops, the intent of that would be, include our sit walks, and then finally, the last sense gives the, the member an avenue of appeal if they, if they feel any effort to dismiss is unfounded.
Okay. I appreciate that explanation. Can you tell me, what's the, I'm having, the conflict of interest wording there? Tell me how that one operates from your...
Well, I think, I think there's several, there are several ways it can be interpreted, but they're all, they're all found in our legal perspective and in, in several different places.
Well, and I don't mean so much what is a conflict of interest, but what is the import of the, so it says, "The term for cause shall include failure to attend without prior approval or voting when the member has," what's the, how does that connect to the, to the failure of the board member or alternate?
Well, that might be better written if there was a comma after chairman, and make that two separate things. And that's, I think that's worded almost verbatim from the way the York bylaws are written and were forwarded to us.
Okay.
Here's what I, here's what I use as a guideline. That may be a typo on my part.
Oh, I see. I see. I, I now understand. If you missed two meetings in a row, and then you voted at a third where you were in a conflict position, that would constitute a third occasion. I think the idea is you shouldn't be voting when you have, I think, that's how I read it anyway, you should not be voting when you have a conflict of interest. So, it becomes a, an additional problematic participation rather than lack of participation. Because I think it would be, it wouldn't make sense to say, "I came to the meeting, but I had a conflict, so I wasn't able to vote." If that happened three times in a row by some very odd happenstance, that person shouldn't be, uh, subject to be removed just because they had a conflict of interest.
And, and I think, I think this evening's meeting is a great example of why participation and attendance to the meetings is important. I mean, this, this stuff doesn't come easy. You, you fellas that have several years of experience, you've got more years of experience than my five or five and a half, and, you know, I, I learn something new each time I come, and it takes some homework, it takes some study, and, and that's why I would like to include the alter, our alternate for the same requirements of attendance, so that they could gain a perspective of what our duties and responsibilities are.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't disagree with that at all, Eldon, and, and I looked as well to try and see if there was any more detail as far as under the heading of qualifications. And other than such things as being a resident of the town, being over the age of 18, I really couldn't find any descriptor in any of the sample ordinances that would describe it as far as qualifications. So, mandatory training or something like that just doesn't seem, not that that couldn't be implemented, but it would seem, especially in a governmental boards that are reliant on volunteers, that the higher you raise the bar as far as you have to go to this meeting or you have to have this training, would probably tend to discourage more applicants, and we're, we have a tough time filling positions anyway. I think, Larry?
I, I'm with Peter on that. This is a board that nobody gets paid, and then if you look in the, in the, the town newspapers, like the Advertiser or the Bridge News, they're, they're all the time advertising for people to join the town boards and, and run for town offices, because they can't find people to do it, and you want to be thankful for everyone that, that is willing to do it, because it's a hard job to take a lot.
And, and I would say the landscape has probably changed even more now that we seem to be minor TV stars. So, I mean, that, that tends to, to dissuade even more people necessarily, you know, maybe not, but my opinion is, tends to dissuade people even more from, from, from coming up and participating. That being said, it, it's hard to believe that someone would want to participate at this level and have absolutely no working knowledge, because you would, you would tend to look ridiculous.
That's the conflict. That's the conflict we're experiencing right now.
I know.
The only time I remember, we ever had a training session, so we all met at the town office, and we went down to the Muddy Rudder Restaurant, and then we went to Freeport, remember that? And there, it was something about new rules and regulations, and we had to sit there and listen to that, and then they brought us home in a van, but that's the only time I remember.
I remember that. Actually, Eldon, I, I took the, the notice that Eldon had when it was offered through the town to have the, the training for Appeals Board, and it was, was helpful. It was, was very helpful. I think that's what I, when I started realizing that it's not, it's not, it's not, let's make it.
It helped me when I, when I attended the, the one I went to, and I'm thinking about going back for refreshers, there's going to be a training session on May 22nd at the Vocations Center in Wyndham, and it can't get much closer than that.
Give us a meal and we'll go.
Sounds like a doctor.
We put a meal and we'll go?
We had $21 to spend for the meal on each one.
It wasn't a bit.
That's actually a pretty good per diem.
It wasn't a bit.
Your nice per diems are like seven bucks. You're lucky to, it might have been three, maybe it was three meals.
Well, back, back to the...
Well, let me, let me say a couple things. One, I think, uh, one, I don't think you're the only member of the board who's concerned about it. The, the reason we talked about it the last time has to do with, so, I think what, I think what you're proposing here, because you're keying off the ordinance, is an amendment to the ordinance.
It seemed like that's much simpler than writing, doing bylaws.
Actually, I think we're, we're within the, the, from reading the attorney's opinion, but we can create our own bylaws.
Right.
And then that would really be just running it by the select board and legal for their approval. If we go to this, that means it's basically got to be approved to go on to town meeting, and has to be approved as an ordinance change with, with the, the vote at town meeting. That might be a little bit more complex than, than us being able to do it in-house ourselves. I, I will tell you that there, as an example, I believe tomorrow night at Selectman Meeting, there's going to be a, a proposal to a change to their bylaws involving public comment. And so, I, I think that, and, and I, I was very appreciative to look at the planning board's bylaws, extremely detailed, our own planning board's bylaws. That being said, I don't know that those have to be that complex, because as I look at the ordinance, especially Article VI, and then again, looking at the repeat description under the shorelands, which is a separate, although very similar, set of, of articles directing how the appeals process takes place in the shoreline, that our zoning ordinances seem to be pretty comprehensive as far as describing a lot of the responsibilities, duties, and process for the, for the board. One of the things I did, and I apologize for not getting together with Eldon, but was just to throw together a quick outline of the bylaws that would simply be the, the, the things that are not spoken to in great detail in the ordinance. And so, basically, Article one would be authority and purpose. The majority of that is outlined in Article VI, and it even cites the MRSA reference to, to what gives us our authority. Two would be membership, and I think that would speak a lot to what Eldon's talking about as far as the appointment process, the requirements for maintaining membership, code of ethics and oath. Article three would be election and authority of the board offices, the chair, the vice chair, that could be formalized a little bit more. Voting, it, it's interesting, as I look more and more at Robert's Rules, most organizations today are tending to hold Robert's Rules, if I'm explaining, and that's because, I guess for, for a number of reasons. One is, because of this, this day of electronic information, and everybody can publish anything, there are individuals that are going out spelling "Roberts" with two Ts and calling it "Roberts Rules Revised," and, and it's, it's "Roberts Revised, Seventh or Eighth Edition" or whatever. And so, loosely based on Robert's Rules, is, I believe, is what I've seen most type of boards governing themselves, always with the caveat, always with the caveat, that the chair reserves the right to declare null and void any of the process if the chair can show cause. As an example, if, if you're going to use a portion of Robert's Rules to be obstructionist in, in having the meeting go forward, which actually you can do with Robert's Rules, the chair can, can put an end to it simply by saying, "No, we're not going there." So, as far as Article V, general meetings, agenda format, it's simply a matter of stating, this is, this, and we already have a pretty formalized format for the agenda, but just formalizing that in writing, and then amendments to the bylaws, just some way to change things going down the road. I mean, this is just, this is just a general outline. The majority of the information that would, would take to put these six bylaws together are contained probably in the examples that we were given, plus Article VI, plus, I did pull up one thing from the state, which is basically the, the state, that's not it, that's for tomorrow night, Board, Board of Appeals, 382691, that basically just gives a general overview of a lot of what's contained in Article VI, but it discusses establishment, organization, procedure, and jurisdiction. So, I, I'm, I guess I'm proposing that we, we do keep, maintain the KISS principle, that we not reinvent the wheel, but if, if we have a mind to formalize this a little bit more and address some of those issues, I think, and I would agree, I think my top is, one would be looking at... is, one would be looking at how, how do you continue on serving this board in good standing? And, and I think that, that all of us are concerned about that. I, I would be willing to make a motion at this meeting that we recommend that to the, to the select board, that we, we accept the resignation of the alternate and search for a new alternate. I mean, I think at this point, the attendance factor itself is one where I believe we can, we can make a motion and ask the Selectman to consider that, to ask for a resignation. And I think that addresses that issue. But I'd, I'd love to see it formalized in, in the bylaws so that people coming into it would know. Because it's, it's kind of unfair for someone to, to sign on and not know what the, what the rules of membership are. I think we all, we all feel that way. We don't want to be doing anything arbitrarily and, and especially if someone hadn't been notified. As I understand it, the chair reached out to the alternate for the last meeting and, and was, was told that, that she would attend.
I did. I did reach out and I believe it was last meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, when does the alternate come up? When does her term come up? How long is she in for?
That I don't know. Stop my add. Danielle, you know?
I think it's 2014.
Okay.
Okay, so it's a while. Because I was going to say, if it's a close time, you could just let it run out and then the select one could call up somebody.
Yeah, but I guess I would, I think I share Eldon's concern here. Every, every meeting we go by without an alternate, we run the risk of having a situation where there isn't going to be a quorum here. And, and I worry about the applicants. Sometimes the applicants are coming from out of state. You know, they drive up here and all of a sudden it's, "Sorry, there's only two of us here." And, and that concerns me. And I, I don't think you can, you can start any too soon in getting the experience.
Can you have two alternates?
You, I believe you can have two alternates.
Yeah, there was, there was two at one time.
Yeah, I believe you, the, the, the state model has two alternates. They have some regulation about the size of the town, but, I mean, if we were less than 1,000 population, we'd only need three people on this board, but unfortunately we're metropolitan.
I thought we did have two alternates.
Yeah, I think at one time we did.
I found two different sets of descriptions and based on time, certain state recommendations up for boards created after a certain timeframe and then before that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure they're, they're the same.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the state.
One reads seven?
Yeah, the state actually says, "Shall govern all boards of appeals established after September 23rd, 1971." So I think that includes us.
And I think there's another, another responsibility we have, and that's called succession planning. You know, I don't think all of us want to do this forever.
I like where you're going with that.
And, and at some, at some point in time.
Absolutely right, Eldon. Absolutely.
But that's, that's up to the Selectmen, isn't it? The Selectmen call you up.
Well, yeah, Larry, but it's up to you too. You could walk away tomorrow.
And it must be, does the ordinance not address the number of alternates?
I think it just mentions alternate. It doesn't say the number, I think. That'd be Section 6.
Yeah, to, to address Larry's comments, I think, I think one of the responsibilities we have is help create our replacement.
No, I don't disagree with that either, Eldon. I think that's a good point.
I don't think we can pass that to the.
Yeah, the Board of Appeals shall consist of five members and one alternate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the 6A right here.
Yeah.
But in this book, I think there are a couple of differences, the legal perspective.
Well, we've merged in two conversations. One, it is probably a good idea to have bylaws. Obviously we've functioned for some time without them and this has become of concern. But I think it's, it's not a bad idea. I, I'm, the outline that you've put together, Peter, seems to me to be a reasonable set of, of topics for such bylaws. I don't, you know, I think what I'm not sure about sitting here now is whether or not the bylaws would, would address the issue we're talking about right this very minute, which is can the board, by its bylaws, in fact, do anything more than create guidelines for its own members about when they will be subject to a recommendation to the select board to, to take action? I mean, in other words, I, I don't know that you can, if the select board appoints the members, I'm not sure whether the board can create something that by automatic operation removes a member. It seems to me it can create a, a framework that says this are, these are the circumstances, be on notice, this is expected of you, and if you don't meet it, there'll be a recommendation that goes to.
Right. Yeah, I don't think he, as a chairperson, can have the right to.
Right, I think the Select.
To do it. You have to make a recommendation to a town official.
Right. The Selectmen would appoint or remove. So one way that, it doesn't mean it's not a good idea to have everyone understand what's expected of them by bylaws.
Sure.
It just means that I think we end up in a similar position that we're in right now, which means, I should bring you, do we, is, I'm happy to entertain motions of anybody on the board that wants to make one with regard to.
Peter, Peter made a motion and.
Was that effective? Did you make it?
Sure, I, I'd put that in the form of motion. I'd move that, due to lack of attendance after contact by the chair with the alternate and, and then subsequently not having the appearance of the individual at the next meeting with, I assume, out any, without any contact with you as to a reason why not.
No, I, I had understood that our alternate member would be in attendance.
Okay. So, so, and I think what's key in all of this as far as the guidelines is concerned is the fact that the, the contact about attendance and the like should go through the chair. So if, if I'm unable to make a meeting, then I should be contacting the chair and letting them know as far in advance as possible, or the, the, the board secretary, and, and let, just letting them know I'm not going to be able to attend. So that didn't happen. So my motion would be based on that and the previous lack of attendance, that the board make the recommendation to the Selectman to request the resignation of the alternating member and post that position to, to be filled.
I like the idea of you saying, let, ask her to resign so that she knows what's going on, instead of just do it without telling her. And I, I would think it would be good if, if the Selectman did try to get two alternates.
I believe that would, that would take a, an ordinance change because it is clear, pointed out to me just now, that it's in there, five members and an alternate. So that once again would have to, have to go through the, the ordinance change process.
I'll second Peter's motion.
Okay. Any discussion in the motion?
I, I guess the only discussion I would have is this. This, and I think we're all appreciative of this, but, but Eldon and I in particular because it was a night when there were just three members here, we had a rather controversial decision to make. It was the only meeting that the alternate attended and it was a unanimous vote. And looking back at that, we were never even able to get the minutes approved from that meeting because the alternate was never at another meeting. And so we only had two individuals, so we couldn't, we didn't have a quorum to approve the minutes. So I just put that caveat in there as far as how this really developed.
Yeah, I think I would say, on the chair of the board, I wasn't able to attend the meeting that Peter's referring to because I was out of town. And I have not met our alternate, our alternate member at any site walk or any subsequent meeting. So I did, and I did, as I mentioned, last meeting and as we've talked about here, reach out to her to request a response regarding her continued interest in being part of the board and, and to find out if she would be in attendance at the last meeting. And she indicated both that she was interested and also would be in attendance and has not been. So it was, and it was an ongoing item on our agenda to get those, must have been on for a year, that we weren't able to approve because the quorum necessary to approve the minutes was never again achieved. And ultimately, we had to make a motion to dispense with that process in light of that fact and in light of the video record that we have of our meetings now. So that's where I'll, I'll add to the conversation. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Okay, so that motion's approved for nothing, which means we're making a recommendation to the select people consistent with the motion. You know, as for the bylaws, I agree, we don't need, I, I agree that we don't need to reinvent the wheel. I guess I'd entertain conversation about how to, how to move forward. Are you able to, are we able to pull?
I, actually, with, with that outline, what I, what I did is basically, I referenced the different examples. And if, if the chair is, is agreeable, what I could simply do is, we could workshop this at the next meeting. I don't think it would take that long. And what I could just basically do is each of those articles, rather than me try and reinvert, reinvent the wheel, just simply pull the examples from the different existing ordinances that I thought were applicable and were readable and straightforward enough and bring that to the board in a draft fashion and for us to look at and, and make adjustments too.
I think that makes sense. I think my own thought, without having looked at them again recently, it strikes me that just for consistency state within the town, to the extent, I mean, I'd be drawing on the planning boards, if we, if we don't think that they don't match our, our own requirements, it's not a bad.
Sure. All I would like to do is, is simply use this outline and, and avoid any duplication that's already in Article VI.
Yeah, absolutely.
But simply maybe reference Article VI to, to any one of these articles for more detail.
Yes, I agree with that. I agree with that. All right. Okay, good. I think that concludes the fourth item on the agenda. Fifth item on our agenda is code enforcement officer comments. Chris, comments tonight? Anything?
Notre Dame or Alabama?
I would just let you guys know that we are still moving forward with an enforcement action down on Bridges Lane, which is at the end of the Cape. Notice violation that was written to the landowner and the contractor that did some treaty pruning in excess of the one-third. Tomorrow night in an executive session, the landowner will be presenting through a landscape architect a restoration plan. And then in March, we'll be looking at trying to mediate the violations with the mediator and the town attorney and the violators' attorneys. Don Willard and myself will be in attendance and we'll try to get this one wrapped up and resolved by March. Hopefully that'll be the resolution. If not, we'll be looking for a consent order, which would be enforced by the court with the restoration plan and monetary penalties for both the landowner and the contractor.
Okay.
Has it, Chris, has any of this been published in the newspapers?
We haven't had any requests for information. Right now, both parties are willing to talk and move in the direction of mediation. Typically, I don't notify the press of anything going on in the town unless they ask. Most of the information I've told you is public record.
Right, notice a violation.
The details are not public record yet. And until they are, it probably wouldn't be worthy of publishing other than the fact that a large-scale violation occurred and that the town's taking action to mediate that.
I'm only asking because I'm wondering if there's an educational opportunity here for the long term.
I would say that that opportunity will happen at some point in time.
Okay.
To a certain extent, the involvement of the contractor results in maybe an educational opportunity indirectly through professionals that help to toe the line maybe.
So, and, and this one was never appealed, so it never came to the board. The last one that made a lot of publicity with the Deep Cove violation, there was an appeals board meeting and there was, press was notified. And then, you know, the PowerPoint was out, I mean, pictures, all the pictures I had were public record. That really did make a statement around the lake that Towne Raymond is very serious about shole and zoning and violations will be addressed. I've had a couple of butters to this property call and wonder why we haven't done anything. And I've assured them that we are taking this extremely seriously and the town has taken appropriate action, but I can't give them details other than to say it's, it's in the works. So it's very delicate. Things that go on in an executive session, I have to keep in executive session and I can only give what's public, public. But, but we are moving forward.
Okay.
We've had, I, I posted a building on Tower Road last month for unsanitary and unhealthful conditions. And that is moving in a direction that the tenants may be moving back in, but it won't be until I issue a C of O when the building is healthy and sanitary again.
Okay.
That one was not, was not, it was a notice violation that went out. It was not appealed, so you guys really didn't get into the loop.
Okay.
Other than that, we've got quite a bit going on in the commercial district, as I told you before. A lot of positive things happening to this Raymond Shopping Center. We've got another couple of things coming to the planning board soon. So commercial-wise, we're, we're moving in a good direction. Residential building has slowed twofold, one for the economic reasons that people aren't building single-family homes as, as they were a few years ago. We're doing some construction on the lakes as we did in the past. Not quite so much this year as last year.
Okay.
So probably things, numbers might be down a little bit. I think they started to pick up and then in the fall, it started to drop off rather rapidly.
Okay. We've passed the date for the submissions for our next meeting. So do we have, do we have a January meeting? Okay. The January, end of January meeting? Okay. Well, thank you, Chris. Anything else to?
No.
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, Chris, Danielle, at the last meeting, we, we made a motion to send the Selectman a recommendation for a revision of the ordinance regarding that date, that 1986 date.
That was sent to the planning board and they did accept it and it will be on, they'll be having it as part of their public hearing coming on January 16th.
Okay.
And then the planning board will recommend that to the Board of Selectmen to be placed on the warrant. But as of right now, they were in agreement with what you folks had put forward.
Yeah, and Peter, I should have, I should have thought to circulate that probably among the, so I prepared a memorandum related to what occurred at the meeting and assisted in the preparation of the.
Language, right.
The language for the.
There was also further discussions on the, removing the 1986 date.
Right, right.
And the second part of that, Part B, was it was for residential structures. That was rehashed again by Phil Sossi, the town attorney.
Yeah.
And it was, felt that it was best to leave it in there rather than remove it. The waters, as I told you, in setback reductions are a little murky.
Right.
And you didn't want to make them any more murky by removing that.
Sure.
So I would let you know that Matt's warrant went to Phil. Phil was looking it over. So we had another attorney, it's another set of eyes looking at that.
Sure.
Part B. So it's been thoroughly discussed at the town attorney's level.
Great. Thank you.
Great. All right, I think I entertain a motion to adjourn.
She'll move.
All right. All in favor? We are adjourned.